Will you even with an invocation by Bill Som or filed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Your Honor. Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts. We thank you so much for the city of Fergus Falls. We thank you for everyone that leads and serves here and all those that participate. And Father, we just thank you for what a blessing this entire area is. And Lord, we pray now for our meeting tonight. I pray for wisdom for the City Council, for good discussion and good decisions. We pray this now in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is open forum. It's an opportunity for members of the public to talk to the council on a subject matter that's not on the agenda. Obviously, when the agenda item comes up, public will be allowed to obviously speak to that. So with that, if you could state your name and the city in which you reside.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Jonathan Cornamont. I'm here on the behalf of the estate. I'm a member of the community of Fergus Falls. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this public hearing in Otter Tail County within the city limits of Fergus Falls on December 1st, 2025 at 17:30. I am seeking the council to grant implied consent for the deposition before your planning commission at its next conveyance. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at the open forum?
Good evening, Mayor. Steve, members of the City Council and dedicated city staff. I'm Lisa Workman, the president of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. The first thing I would like to do today is extend a sincere thank you to the Public Works and Streets Department for keeping our roads safe for the holiday travel. It's always a challenge the first time around, and we really appreciate it. And the roads have been in great condition in spite of the weather that Mother Nature delivered to us. I'd also like to thank Mayor Hicks for helping us kick off the holiday shopping season on Small Business Saturday. And I'd like to thank the community in advance and for your dedication to our local stores over this past first holiday shopping weekend. Your commitment to shopping locally helps our local businesses, who in turn invest in our schools, our churches, our clubs, Boy Scouts, and many things in our community. So again, thank you all for your commitment to supporting our local businesses, which helps them be successful. Also, in the spirit of the holiday season, I'd like to personally invite you and the entire community to a few upcoming holiday events. Tomorrow, Tuesday, December 2, Cala Lily Designs, a locally-owned business, is celebrating 15 years here in Fergus Falls. They'll be hosting an open house that's open to everyone from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at their studio at 205 East Lincoln Avenue. And East Lincoln Avenue will also be hopping the following day, Wednesday, December 3. We invite you to stop by the Christmas Open House and grand opening for FM Bank and Ryan Hansen Homes. Again, that was a project that was supported by the city, and so we hope that you will come and help them celebrate their grand opening from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, December 3. They, of course, are located at 226 East Lincoln Avenue.
And I think Cali's is doing some catering.
Yes, there will be treats from Cali's. And Cala Lily Designs is also working with another local caterer. So it's always fantastic when we see local businesses supporting each other in ways like that. Of course, speaking of local businesses, we have a number of them who are participating in the Otter Cove Festival of Lights. That also kicks off on Wednesday, December 3. It'll be open every night from 5:00 until 9:00 p.m. at Kirkbride Park. It is their biggest fundraiser of the year, so they are collecting free will donations. But many businesses have put together some fabulous light displays, and you can drive through from 5:00 until 9:00 from December 3 until December 13. And of course, save the date for December 13. It is a day, Saturday, December 13, is packed with activities in Fergus Falls, starting with the Candy Cane and Cocoa Party at the YMCA in the morning, followed by the Over the River Festival with many events throughout downtown from noon until 5:00. And that leads up to the tree lighting and the fireworks over the river that evening. That also is the final night for the Festival of Lights at the Kirkbride. And finally, the next event coming up before our next council meeting would be the public library is hosting a bookish celebration on Monday, December 15 at 6:30 p.m. I'm guessing we'll probably be wrapped up by then for that next meeting. But again, we would be honored if you would share your congratulations to the many businesses that are supporting or celebrating anniversaries, festivities, and things like that. They've commented to me a number of times how much they appreciate your presence or words of encouragement. So again, happy holidays, and we hope to see you at many of the festivities around the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are a few flyers for Over the River out on the table at the back there. So with that, we got another person.
Mike Streeter, Fergus Falls. I guess I'd like to know when the five that voted for the Humane Society, $25,000. Are you guys all going to step up and pay that money back so that the taxpayer don't have to pay it? I mean, I'm sure that we could use that for the recreation program in the summertime or something else instead of just donating it away. And some of you guys, Mayor, I sent you a video from Rand Paul from Kentucky and Daniel Boone, and it talks about giving tax dollars away. Something to look at on Facebook. I know Mr. Scott got it. Yeah. So I mean, it talks about giving our tax dollars away, and we really don't have the right to give our tax dollars away. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. With that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. But do you know of any things? With that, we will look for a resolution to approve the agenda if somebody would care to make that. Thank you, Jim. Somebody's got a second? Laura, thank you. Roll call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, a public hearing to consider vacation request at 6:20 Broken Down Dam Road, PID 71002990751000, as requested by Richard and Catherine Lottie. And following that, there'll be a first reading of an ordinance, 75, 8th Series, Vacation of Main Street and Oakland Avenue. And with that, I think Clara Beck is going to give some background on that.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request that's been a while in the making, so I'm happy to have it before you tonight. This is kind of a cleanup of an issue that's existed for many, many years. This is one of the earliest plats in Fergus Falls, and as you can see, it anticipated that there would be building of roads through what is now a single unified property owned by one single owner. Over the years, with different ownership, it's been essentially used as one large property without notice of the fact that there are rights of way running through. And in fact, I think previous owners have thought that that, this vacation had already occurred. However, it had not. So in some action with Planning Commission a couple of years ago, it came to light that these, there are some buildings that are in this right of way, and the discussion was, let's maybe get that cleaned up. So the current property owners, the Lottis, have petitioned the city to vacate just the portions of these roads that are directly adjacent to their property. You can see the outline there on the map. So this does not affect any other landowners. Any effects that would be felt by nearby landowners have been dealt with by having other easements and agreements in place. So there is still access available to all landowners around the area. So I've been working with our engineering department on this. They don't feel that there would be any truly adverse effects to vacating this property. And so that is the petition that's before you tonight. And Kyle and I are happy to try to answer any questions you might have. The petitioners are also here in the audience should you have questions for them.
Any questions at this stage?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mrs. Beck, for presenting that. What access does the city still have, then, to the Broken Down Dam?
Yeah. So access is going, it's not, is there any way you can zoom in just a tidge then? So Mill Street goes around in a curve. The city is using that Mill Street access and then going up through property actually owned by a neighboring property to access Broken Down Dam.
And do we have an easement that is perpetual, that will go on forever, that will have access for our residents to get down there? Do you know?
I'm going to maybe look to Len for an answer on that.
We do have property. It's not an easement, but we do own property there. If the owner that's allowing us access right now decides that he doesn't want to continue that, we do have our own access. It would just need to be cleared out.
And where is that? Where is that at?
Right there. You can see on this map here. We own that parcel. So we're using this parcel right there that's owned by Ryan Mohn. And he's good with us using it at this point. But if he ever decides that he's not, then we do have a parcel right here that would just, it's really thick with trees, and we'd just have to clean it up.
So Ryan owns 71 ending in four zeros. He owns the one adjacent to Mr. Lottie, right where the yellow line ends, correct?
Right here.
Yeah, that's his. Yep. Where is our access, then? Is it back to the east?
Oh, we've got this road right away, and then we own this property right here. The city owns it. Trace that right away out. So this is the road right away. It comes down through here. And actually, his, the road isn't actually in the right of way. So his property is approaching right here into the right of way, and the right of way continues down to Main Street.
Do we know what that looks like, Mr. Taylor, the, where you'd have to cut through the trees? What I want to make sure is, is that our residents go down here to Broken Down Dam. They've been going over that property for years. But if we get the wrong homeowner on that property that owns that and says, hey, this is done, do we still have the ability to access that? Because I went, ran around there as a kid. Do we know that we can cut through those trees, get ample access for our residents to use that park? Because if we can't, that park becomes landlocked now. Otter Tail Power owns all the way around it. Lottis own all the way around it. We won't have any access to that. Do we know for sure we can go through that piece to get there?
Yes.
You do? Okay.
It would just take a lot of work. There's a lot of trees to clear out. There'd need to be a parking lot built and some steps down to the existing walkway.
So did you say we had an actual perpetual easement with Mohn, or do we have just a verbal?
Just a verbal. There's nothing in writing. Nothing has been reported.
I would encourage the council to get something in writing if we could to do that. What's his thoughts?
We've tried.
And he won't do it?
We've tried to buy it, actually.
It gives me grave concern, you know. And I understand what Lottis are trying to do, and that's no issue. They've got a lot of, you know, that on their property. But it gives me grave concern if we can't get down in there for that to be our park. So I'm not sure. I understand where you're at. I understand where you're at.
Any other questions? If not, I think we just need an introduction for the first ordinance, the public hearing. So we will open a public hearing. Anybody wishing to make comment, please step forward to the lectern, state your name.
Mike Streeter, Fergus. I owned that property at one time, lots 10, 11, 12, and 13. And I guess before I would agree to do this, I would get that road platted where it belongs. Because Lot 10 and 11, if you go on Lot Number 12, that actually runs over to the front step over on that other, where the Johnsons used to live. And Lot 13, that goes across the road, and it squares that piece off from where you guys were at. And in 1989, Daly Shoot, there's a Daly that owned the property in the middle of that property, too. And that was when Harvey Trippke owned that property. And that road that goes across the back, if you're going to go down to the east, you're not going, you're going, you've got a long ways to go to Broken Down Dam because Broken Down Dam is way over here to the left. It's not back over here, and then you follow that crooked, snaky road. That gets you down to the bottom. But if you want to get on top, then you got to go another 100 yards up on the top. I guess my opinion is I think that you should look into that because this isn't, this property isn't even close to where it's platted. And since you are using the word that you got it unverbal, I sold that property to a gentleman whose father is in this room. And at that time, Dan Edwards wrote a letter stating that the city would pay all the plating and all the expenses to do that, because this isn't even close to where it's platted. And at that time, that, the road, that's the Broken Down Dam road, that is an easement to that. But the easement isn't where the road is. So that's something maybe you want to do a little more digging in before you okay this. Just my opinion.
Thank you. I don't think that's going to affect the discussion tonight, because I think what you're saying is the roads, we need to tidy up the road actually getting to Broken Down Dam. But I hear what you're saying. So any other comments?
Dwayne Cookman, Fergus Falls. Can we see where Broken Down Dam is relative to where he's talking about? I guess I was not.
Almost see it. It's right up in here. So the path goes down from the parking lot that Ryan Mohn's own, Ryan Mohn owns. You go down this way, and that cuts back here, and it's down here somewhere.
So this evening's petition is not really affecting the access to Broken Down Dam. There's other issues that I agree I think needs cleaning up, wouldn't you say? Any other public comments? If not, the public hearing is closed. Now, we just need somebody to nominate the first hearing. Just somebody to introduce this. Thank you, Laurel. The next item on the agenda is awarding of bids to which there are none. And then the next item is under petitions and communications. It's the introduction to police K-9 Capo and handler Officer Joe Mattson. And I will call upon Police of Chief Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight is an exciting step forward for the Fergus Falls Police Department and the community. There are fewer, more versatile, and incredible tools for a police department than a K-9. The abilities that a dog have to assist law enforcement are no short of amazing. And how can a smile not cross your face when you see an energetic dog like Capo?
See him here in a minute. We didn't rehearse the timing of that. So. But I will have Officer Mattson come up here shortly and talk about Capo's capabilities. But I wanted to make sure that you understand my appreciation for your support of our K-9 program. K-9s are an extremely heavy lift for any department, but particularly a mid-sized department such as ours. We've not had a K-9 since 2017 when XL retired, and we all know that once expenses are removed from a budget, how hard they are to get back. Now, the obvious expense is Capo, just under $11,000 coming from Slovakia. Then another $6,000 to Code Blue K-9 to train the two of them for 13 weeks in Rushford, Minnesota, the southeast corner of the state, just a few miles from the Iowa border. But then you add in the travel costs for lodging and meals to be gone for 13 weeks. The squad car that you need, it has to be a specialized, have specialized climate control to keep Capo safe, and an automatic door release. So we're talking about $55,000 all in. Then you have miscellaneous equipment, such as collars, harnesses, toys, and food. All-in cost for this, about $85,000. Now, Officer Mattson got a $7,500 grant from the American Kennel Club. And over the years, we have had generous citizen donations of around $4,000 to the Friends of the K-9 Fund. And we're currently waiting to hear back on whether or not we will receive a grant from the Floyd and Harriet Miller or the Inga M. Johnson Endowment Fund for between anywhere from $500 to $2,500. Our police department K-9 line item budget was set at $26,900 for 2025, and for 2026 is $12,926, since we don't have some of the startup costs. But there are also departmental sacrifices. Patrol working short and covering the call load while Officer Mattson is away at training. Officer Jack Urick lost his shift or work partner for 13 weeks. And I also want to commend Officer Tyler Young, who agreed to switch his normal shift hours to fill in for Officer Mattson while he was at training. But without the right handler, a K-9 is no more effective than the dog you see in the vehicle next to you as you drive down the road, head protruding out the passenger side window with his tongue hanging out. Just a high-priced, useless tool. I witnessed that once in my previous department. It takes the right officer with the right mentality, proactive and dedicated, fully devoted to knowing his craft in order to maximize the full potential of a K-9. I can take absolutely zero credit for this assignment, as Officer Mattson was actually at a 13-week K-9 training when I was sworn in. But I was appreciative that he recognized me at Spanky's when I was picking up some takeout food and introduced himself and his wife Brianna. He could have walked right by me, and I wouldn't have even known. But I'd already heard about Officer Mattson's solid work ethic and reputation from others on our department. Dedicated particularly to seeking out those that are selling drugs in our community, the same fentanyl-laced drugs that are resulting in overdoses, that are killing citizens in our community and forever changing the lives of parents, spouses, and children that are left to mourn their death and try to pick up the pieces of their shattered lives and move on. I serve on the opioid settlement advisory committee, and I can tell who on that committee has lost a loved one due to an overdose. I can see the pain on their face. Officer Mattson and Capo are a team specially trained to seek out and arrest those profiting from drug training, drug trafficking. Officer Mattson keeps up to date on case law and trends. He knows how to work within the law to follow a person's constitutional rights. Knowledge of the law allows confidence in decision-making, and that perfectly describes Officer Mattson. Now, I would like to introduce Officer Mattson and his partner, Capo. And he'll discuss, just on a high level, his capabilities.
Until we haven't been around large crowds that clap often. I was wondering what's going on. First off, I appreciate the time. So to sum up the large variety of things that he's capable of doing, you know, primarily, Capo is a locating tool that starts off with individuals that are wanted for crimes that they've committed or individuals that are lost, hurt, any person that we'd be able to locate. Certain locations would be building searches, area searches. Down. Down. Building searches, area searches, that's typically where we would conduct such location tracking. So that would be tracking, which uses the disturbance of ground, and then area searches, which uses human odor. Part of that locating tool is the detection of narcotics. There's a lot of training and time that goes into it. There's a variety of drugs that we are trained to detect. The bare bones is the meth, fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, and crack cocaine. And then there's about five other ones that we've trained on. We certify on four basic odors. So in certain circumstances, he is trained to physically apprehend individuals. This is a very, it's a great tool to use. It separates the officer from the subject. That subject is also distracted by the physical apprehension. In most cases, it's absolutely the, one of the safest uses of forces out there based on certain studies. So on top of that, he's also a great public relations tool. Everybody loves him. He's the star of the show. We'll be able to use him in many facets to basically gain community trust and relations.
Finally, you can have the right K-9 and the right handler, but without the right family support, you don't have all three legs of a solid tripod foundation. Officer Mattson's wife Brianna is that third leg of the tripod. I watched how Brianna interacted with Capo at his K-9 graduation, and it was very obvious to me that Capo is being welcomed into a home that is full of love, support, and energy for K-9s. Happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
Any questions of Capo?
What's the life expectancy or for our, for him? I mean, is it, I shouldn't say life expectancy. How long will this last? I mean?
So a working span typically is about eight years. He's obviously a smaller frame dog, so the span can last a little bit longer. It's mainly based on their joint health. It's typically why dogs would retire.
Right. Yeah. My experience, and I was involved with three K-9s, and eight was probably the longest, and about four was the shortest.
Right. Thank you.
Chief, one more question for, for the public's interest in information. When they see the dog in public, should they approach the puppy, or should they just let the thing go by?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, just keep a distance. I mean, and, you know, Officer Mattson does a great job of kind of being, you know, aware of that. But yeah, you know, the old days where it's like, you know, kids just swarming and petting, you know, the K-9, like, I mean, they are, you know, they are animals, so we prefer to err on the side of caution and everything.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Mike? Yeah, Your Honor, I think just more of a comment than anything. And Chief, I tell you what, it's really nice to watch you in front of us here and in front of the community praising one of your officers. That's the leadership that we're looking for in the department, so I appreciate that. To Officer Mattson, I want to thank you for your dedication. To go out in the field, to go out there where things are tough by yourself is hard, but to take somebody else with you, that means so much, like Capo, is even harder. So I appreciate your dedication to doing that. Not everybody can do it on that end. And I think to everybody that's watching, we've all been affected by meth, fentanyl, and everything else. And if this tool can help take that off the streets and make families more whole, I think that's the greatness of what we see here tonight. So I thank both of you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I think, again, is there something on the website if people do want to help contribute towards Friends of the K-9? If not, we should probably get a picture of Capo on there that you can hit Capo, and that link will take you to where you can go.
I did see, I did see a nice card that was floating around that I think individuals that have donated over the years, I know we've kept track and we're sending those cards. But yeah, that's a great point, a possibility of just donating online.
Yep. Okay. With that, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of acknowledging the retirement. This is kind of like a police department sort of sector. Retirement and 24 years of service from Connie Everson, whereas Connie Everson has submitted her intent to retire effective December 5, 2025. her intent to retire effective December 5th, 2025, and whereas Connie was hired as a records technician at the Police Department on July 16, 2001, and she has held that position throughout her career with the city of Fergus Falls. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Connie Everson and thank her for her 24-plus years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting at the City Council held on December 1st, 2025 by Councilmember...
I'll do that.
Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and was seconded by Councilmember...
I can do that.
Laura Killie, and adopted by the following vote. All those, I think it's a roll call, is it?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Whereupon the above resolution was duly adopted. And I don't think Connie's...
She's not, I think her retirement party's right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I encouraged the department to come, I didn't realize that there were, that I totally forgot that she was also having her retirement party tonight. So I have a nice plaque that I will make sure that she gets sometime this week. She's, she's working the rest of this week. But good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is a tough one for me. It's very sad to see a dedicated, well-respected employee leave under your watch, and Connie will be my first. Now, it might be easy to ask, well, how well could you have even known Connie? You've only been here for just two months over her 24 years of service. But some memories will stay with you for life. And my first memory of walking into my new home in the Fergus Falls Police Department was a warm smile and a greeting as Connie buzzed me through the doors for the first time. I'm sure Connie had some sort of a witty comment to go along. I can't remember exactly what it is, but I think it was a warning that I was going to put on 35 pounds my first year because of the good food that was in the building. But I was able to find some old performance evaluation comments for Connie from 2005 to 2007, and those same comments and descriptions still hold true today. Work is accurate, thorough, organized, and neat. Connie continues to excel in the areas of dependability, punctuality, and attendance. She is conscientious in the area of policy compliance and rules observance, and her computer knowledge and skills are exceptional. Connie demonstrates excellent cooperation and communication, and one of my favorites and probably the most accurate was ever-present, ever-present sense of humor that creates a cheerful and optimistic atmosphere in this workplace, even when it is extremely busy. You would never know that Connie had been employed here for 24 years. Her positive spirit, witty comments, and spark bring an energy to police records that I don't think can be duplicated. The work will still get done, but it will be different without Connie. Now, when Connie told me she was officially going to retire, of course I had to ask her if it was because of me. Police Department employees have been known to jump ship when a new chief comes in. But Connie just said to me, it's time. She said, I am finding myself getting short with the public, and they don't deserve that. And I found that to be such a wise and insightful statement. I only hope that someday when I decide to call it a career that I have the self, the same self-awareness to make that decision like she did. And my, my final comment about Connie and records is that the record staff's going to be in some trouble or they're going to need to bring Connie back, because they have a tradition where they call employees on their birthdays and they sing to them over the speakerphone. And when that, when that occurs, from my office, I can hear them singing, and it's definitely Connie's voice that carries that group. And the final thing, I had some coworker comments, and it ends as Connie's skill and persistence will be missed, along with her institutional knowledge, city of Fergus Falls knowledge, and steadfast support for the Fergus Falls Police Department. There is no amount of words that can depict her meaningfulness to our organization. So in conclusion, I extend my sincere appreciation to Connie for dedicating 24 years of faithful service to the Fergus Falls community. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be up there again in a second, because the next item is a retirement of Kevin Stontable, whereas Kevin Stontable has submitted his intent to retire effective December 30th, 2025, and whereas Kevin was hired as a police officer on March 15, 2004, and whereas he was named the School Resource Officer Detective on November 1st, 2005, whereas on January 6th, 2014, he achieved Master Patrol status, and whereas Kevin was promoted to Sergeant on January 30th, 2015, a position he has held until his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Kevin and thank him for 21-plus years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting of the City Council held on December 1st, 2025 by Councilmember...
I'll do that.
Jim Fish, and who moved its adoption and was seconded by Mike...
I got it.
Mike Mortensen, and adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved.
All right, good evening for the last time, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I've never actually even met Kevin. He's been on the payroll since July, but not actually working. Kevin utilized the City Council-approved Public Safety Officer Wellness Plan. Now, this is a plan that I don't necessarily think is being used as it was originally intended, but that is a discussion for another time. I will say that even though I don't know Kevin, as I have been involved in some committees here in the Fergus Falls community and met with groups in this community, Kevin's name is frequently brought up. And what that means is that Kevin has made an impact in the Fergus Falls community. In addition to serving for 21 years, Kevin has helped out the Fergus Falls Community Education Committee by teaching Point of Impact. Point of Impact is an awareness program that aims to reduce teen car crashes by educating parents and students on common risks that teen drivers face and their role in developing safer teen drivers. Then I went to Bethel Lutheran to get an understanding of their security protocols and procedures, and found out that Kevin teaches a class there to their security team. These are just a couple of examples that I am aware of, but I'm sure that there are plenty more out there. So it's very obvious to me that Kevin has been an active servant of the Fergus Falls community, and his retirement is well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. And we wish them well in their retirement. Having done it recently, it's a good thing to do if you can do it. So the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. There are six items. A motion approving the open and closed minutes for the November 17th, 2025 City Council meeting. A motion approving licenses. A resolution accepting a $2,350 donation from Fergus Home and Hardware and adjusting the 2025 fire department budget. Resolution supporting a request for local road improvement program funds from MinDOT for the improvement of West Lincoln Avenue. A resolution declaring outdated streetlight poll declarations and authorizing their disposal. And a resolution setting a public hearing for the denial of a tobacco license for Cloud Trading Inc. for December 15, 2025 at 5:30 in the City Council chambers. If somebody would care to make that resolution. Thank you, Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
I'd second.
Thank you, Laurel. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is under ordinance and resolutions. A resolution changing the traffic light signals to stop signs at the Lincoln and Mill and the Lincoln and Court intersections. As everyone is aware, we trailed this for a month, and you know, all I can say from my perspective, I've, I've heard nothing but positive comments from downtown businesses about it. I think the, the Daily Journal did a poll, but they did that at the time when the Lincoln Union Lights were at, had got a breakdown, and so I think that did, you know, did not help the cause. It added a degree of confusion to the actual lights themselves, you know, the actual stop, stop signs. And I think the traffic does seem to have adapted well. I've watched traffic myself, and there's less racing from, you know, one end of the street to the other trying to beat the lights before they turn green. And I think, you know, from my perspective, it's something that maybe we should just extend it. People have got used to them being four-way stops, and if we flip back to them being lights, you know, then will we create more confusion than, than we've done already? You know, and so, but with that, I mean, I don't know, any discussion from any other council members on it?
The people that have reached out to me didn't like them.
Right.
And, you know, and they were in my ward. And I think listening to what the public wants, at least in my little neighborhood, in my area of the world, you know, I, I like it personally, but I heard more negative than for it. And one of the reasons was that people don't know what to do with this flashing red light anymore, it seems like, is my comments that I've heard.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, I'm going to be voting against this tonight. I do not want to go backwards to stoplights or stop signs in our community. I think it sends a, I just think it sends a wrong message. I think we need to be a message that these have been here 50 years, they've worked very well, and they're appropriate for our community. I think going back from a stoplight to a stop sign sends a wrong message to businesses that want to come, residents that are down there. When I thought about this, it isn't the traffic that I'm so worried about. I'm concerned about the pedestrians, and that's what really matters downtown. These businesses, we want pedestrians to walk from one corner to the next corner, over to their shop, to the next shop. And I thought about it, when you come out of the Viking, let's say we take a group of six men, six women, one's going to go down to Dandelion and Burdock, one's going to go across the street maybe over to the old, the other corner. If they just kind of take off, what's the traffic going to do with a stop sign? When you have lights, you know as pedestrians, you're talking, visiting, you're going shop to shop, you know that you walk, and you walk through with safety. When we go with stop signs and you got them in all directions, you can't no longer walk with safety. And so that's the issue for me. Traffic, I don't really care. Pedestrians, I care about. And when I started looking at this, one of the things that came from the Arizona Department of Public Safety said, "When properly timed, traffic signals increase the traffic handling capacity of an intersection, and when installed under conditions that justify its use, it's a valuable device for improving the safety and efficiency of both pedestrians and vehicle traffic." And it particularly stops accidents, most notably in a broadside collision. And so I would like our city to stay the way it is. I'd like to have traffic lights down there. I'd like to have safety for pedestrians, and so I will be voting no to go forward with it tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Scott?
I haven't heard one negative, and he didn't live in Fergus, he came to town to my shop, but otherwise there's been nothing positive. The people that work downtown and own businesses downtown like it, it seems like it slows the traffic down. And so I'm, I didn't really care one way or the other, but I'm going to vote yes for it.
Laurel?
Or just going another line?
Might as well. Everybody has a say.
I've heard all positive, except for the question of the preference of leaving the lights in by someone concerned about if we need to go back, not having the cost of putting them back. And my understanding from talking to one of the other council members was the lights are staying. Is that accurate?
I think, I think if the vote was to, you know, go away from lights, then we would remove the lights. I mean, there's no point in having a fixture there that...
Okay. I don't know if everyone was on the same page with that was being the intention.
They would be replaced with four-way stop signs as opposed to traffic lights, so they wouldn't be red, red flashing.
But we would keep them if needed down the road?
They'd probably, I mean, we could, we can, we have capacity to store them, but they would need probably a...
Right, that was the question raised.
They'd probably need upgrading at some point anyway.
Okay.
Jim?
I've not heard one word bad about the lights. I will be voting yes.
Laurel? Laura?
Well, as I'm downtown, I have definitely seen a change with the flow of traffic. I feel that it's definitely been less of the racing, more of a nice flow that can go through downtown. It's easier to park as people are trying to pull in and out. And for pedestrians, I mean, I've been crossing that street every day, and I mean, I feel that it's a bit safer with the stop sign versus sitting there sometimes waiting. One thing that I noticed was when the snow had hit with the stop sign, I didn't feel like I had to hurry up and race to get across the street before your walk sign turns, turns orange, red, whatever that is. So I will vote for it. I haven't heard, I haven't heard any negatives, and I've been there predominantly for the last three weeks, and I've definitely noticed some positive changes.
Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've talked to not all of the downtown merchants, but the ones that I have concur that downtown's traffic is safer. I'm not saying that we are Mayberry, but if the traffic is going slow and I find a lady or a young kid running across, if you will, jaywalking, I stop for them. It's going to happen. You got to rush out of your car, it's cold, you're going to run across the street to the store. So I appreciate the slower traffic, and those are the comments I've been hearing. I have not heard any negative. I hate to throw the chief under the bus here, but what's his opinion on it?
I mean, I don't think we really have data one way or the other. It's just been such a short time to say like, one is, is more, you know, safer than the other.
We'll get a motion, and then you can speak when somebody can make a resolution.
I'll make a motion that we go to the stop and flashing stoplights.
Thank you, Mark. Would somebody care to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Dwayne, did you want to say something?
Dwayne Cookman. My question is, when you have emergency vehicles, let's say like fire truck, are they going to take, because right now with the stoplights, if I'm, tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you have an emergency, you can change those lights.
No.
Not those two meters. The rest we can, but those two are not.
Okay, I was wondering if it affects those, because it may change your route.
But yet those two have not been, they were not set.
Dwayne, I'll just say real quick, I mean, even if you have the green going through, you still got to go through with caution. So like, you know, it's, that part of it doesn't really matter one way or the other. You still got to just be careful when you go through the...
Because there's always a cause and effect, that what else to change that, okay, you see the traffic inside slowing down, but you know, seconds count.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that...
Very rarely do the fire trucks go down Main Street. I'm on Washington app, I mean, mostly you guys are going down Washington and turning from there. Is that accurate, if that's the direction you're going? Okay.
With that, roll call, please.
Yes.
No.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Killie.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution introducing a land sale for a portion of the city-owned property located at 2010 West Lincoln Avenue. This obviously is land to Roy Z. Reel LLC behind the liquor store. So would somebody care to make that resolution? Al? Thank you, Al. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? This will be the first introduction. It will come back again, obviously, in the next council meeting. So roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a prepayment of the fire department ladder truck. Would somebody care to make that resolution, and then Bill can speak to the subject matter?
I'll make the motion.
Mark Leighton and Scott Rachel's.
There you go.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Yeah, in...
Yeah, in the memo tonight, you saw there's a couple options. You know, when we accepted the purchase of that ladder truck, we have the option of making a prepayment and then earning 5% on that money while they, while they're in production of the truck. And Chief Muckaw and I, we were researching this. One thing to note, the, we want to make the payment if we're going to do that in December, because the rate's going to go down to 4.5% January 1st with that company. So, of course, we know rates are kind of trending down a bit, and so, you know, we reviewed this with our investment committee, our investment advisors. They said, yep, this is a good deal at 5%, so go ahead and take it. So, the two options you have is, we can put down a total of $473,652. We have funds on hand right now that we've been saving of $430,000. We have some money left of the state public safety aid, so applying $43,000 of that. So, those two, and putting that as a deposit down on fire truck. We've done this in the past too, not to this amount. We also didn't, you know, receive interest on it in those years. It's been a number of years since we did that. But the other option would be increasing it yet, assuming you're going to adopt the fire department budget with, with the amount that's in there. Currently, we have $205,000 in the 2026 budget going towards this truck account, so applying $180,000 of that towards this, bringing that to 653. Then we would apply that for that five year, or 5% for this three-plus years. So, the first option would bring the price down by $82,772. That would be the earnings we would receive. And the other one, $114,000, so certainly more earnings on that. We did check in on doing a surety of some sort, since, you know, we're putting this, this money out there, and it's not sitting in a bank account or invested in our securities that are, you know, pretty stable and conservative, and according to Minnesota statutes. So, there would be a price for that surety. The first option would be $2,200. Second option, $2,900. Certainly even more reasonable, I think, than Ryan and I thought they would come back with the price. So, we had talked with a couple of our local banks on how do we do that? Because we haven't done that with the surety before for something like this for a down payment. So, looking for your wishes, but we recommend we do this and take one of these options. I'm pretty confident that you're going to accept the fire department budget, so I think I'd go for the higher one, but that's up to you.
I'll make a motion to do option two.
I mean, we technically have a resolution, so we just have to amend, amend the resolution to go with option two. I think that would be Mark and Scott.
I have a little more discussion. Bill, I see our current investments are earning 1.92%. Is there any other liquid money that you're comfortable putting towards this? Or are they so segregated that, you know, they're tied?
They are segregated, because for instance, our sewer and water funds have higher balances, but you cannot apply sewer and water balances to other departments of the city. That's under state law and our charter. So, I think this is the route I would go. And, you know, on our last investment committee, our investment portfolio for the last, it was, was it, for the last year was about 6%. And then our more liquid money that's with our 4M fund, we are just under 4% as of today on those funds. So, that's currently where we're at with things. But certainly with rates trending down a bit, 5% is a good, a good deal on that.
So, what you're saying, the liquid funds right now are, in essence, necessary...
Earning just under 4.
But at the same time, in two or three years, they'll go down. I'm just wondering, do you have any extra liquid money that could go towards this truck for the investment reasons, not stealing from Peter DePayo?
Yeah, we have to almost do, we'd probably need to do an internal loan for something like that. You know, because we're very segregated, and here's what we have in these departments, so we're not taking the fire department money and sending it to the police department or to the street department. So, we definitely segregate that. So, if you were going to do that, we'd have to set up an internal loan, so we're accountable between departments on that.
I mean, 200 grand, let's say the difference in the investment was 3%, you know, we're earning 2, and they're going to be paying us 5. And I know we're not there yet, don't get me wrong, but that's 6 grand a month, or pardon me, 6 grand a year. That'd be another 18,000. Just an idea for the council to consider, to take a little extra liquid money and put in this 5% investment, because rates are going to go down. Thank you.
And any other comments? If not, then...
And I'll amend my motion to go to phase two, if not more.
With that roll call, please.
Layton?
Should I vote yes now or no? Yes.
Freymeyer? Yes.
Hortonsen? No.
Rachel?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
The resolution is approved. One big deposit for one big fire truck.
Mayor, I would like to thank Bill for actually, for your advice, you know, this is what I would suggest you do. So, I appreciate that. Usually, you're very quiet about things like that, so I appreciate it.
Well, I'm pretty confident. There we go.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a rezoning of 1397 South Tower Road from RA to B3 as recommended by the planning commission, and directing the city attorney to draft the applicable ordinance. I think obviously we have some members of the public here this evening that would, obviously, we will allow, you know, we're going to allow limited discussion. I mean, obviously, I think, you know, we're, the opportunity for public comment was prior to this meeting, and obviously, prior to the planning commission. But I think, you know, everybody here is sensitive and also understands the concerns that are being brought up. And so, we would like a representative or two to kind of speak, but we're not looking for kind of repetition of the same comments. But we do want to allow, obviously, some people to speak. With that, I will call upon Clara Beck to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to do my best to just represent the discussion that was had by the planning commission at their November 24th meeting, at which they held a public hearing on this rezoning request. The planning commission had their public hearing at their 5:15 meeting time here in City Council chambers to hear a request that was submitted by QuickTrip, who is the applicant on behalf of the property owner, Leland Rogness. Both the property owner and the applicant are here in the audience tonight, should you have questions regarding the application itself. The parcel itself, which Guy is very helpfully pulling up for me here on the screen, just so we can see it, maybe. We're working on it. But the parcel itself was annexed into the city in 2015, and when the city annexes in properties, it zones them automatically RA, which is residential agricultural. So, you'll see a line of properties out on that side of town that were initially in Buse Township and brought in into the city limits at the same time, that share the same residential agricultural zoning. The request has been made because there is a possibility of development happening on this property. So, the developer is the one who did submit the application. I do want to say that they have not closed on that property yet, so there is no official deal in place. This is just getting some steps out of the way before they, they may move forward with some sort of a project. But planning commission heard the case. The public hearing, either due to technological, technology issues, or because things just hadn't been sent in yet, city staff had not received any written requests before the public hearing. We were told at the public hearing that written requests were sent in. I've gone back and forth with our IT department and was not able to locate those, but luckily, we got copies of them, so those have been added to the record. One of the letters is in your packet, and I believe more have been sent into the city following that. We did have several members of the public who, who came to the meeting and did speak at the podium, and I have a list of their names. We have Lee Rogness, Anna Heitman, Ramona Heitman, Roger and Teri Teberg, and Dean George, who is the representative from QuickTrip. So, they were heard during the public hearing conversation at the planning commission level, centered on the best district for the requested use, which would be a travel center. In our city code, both the B2 zone and the B3 zones allow for that use by right. There's no further permitting required from a zoning perspective. So, the decision by the planning commission after discussion on Monday night, the 24th, was to suggest to the, the city council, they approve a rezoning for the, for a B3 district on the property at hand. So, I'm happy to answer questions about the planning commission process, any of the discussion that was held on Monday. And then, I do believe, as the mayor said, there are members of the public who would also like to speak. So, happy to take your questions or sit down as you see fit.
Scott?
What's the difference if, why was it, didn't decide on a B2 zone instead of a B3 zone? What was the reason for that, do you know?
It, both, both allow it. B3 is, encompasses more uses than a B2 zone does. So, the conversation was really about what does planning commission and ultimately city council see as a potential development pattern in that part of town? And focusing on the B3 would give a wider range of possibilities. It also opens up a little bit more in regard to development on the sites themselves with just fewer regulations for, for development in the B3 zone versus the B2 zone. So, looking toward the future and not entirely sure what development would look like, planning commission felt B3 was a, was an appropriate zone to focus on.
Mike, can I say?
Mrs. Beck, can you explain why it didn't go to a conditional use permit? I watched the planning commission, there was some discussion. I think it's important for the community to hear that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, in the B2 and B3 zones, a gas station slash convenience store use is permitted without a conditional use permit. And the way that, the way that rules work surrounding planning decisions, you cannot assign a conditional use permit to something if it's not already in code as a conditional use. Maybe Rolf can say that a little better than, than I just did, but...
Well, think of it as allowing something like this in a B1 zone. And in the B1 zone, it's not allowed, but, but you would like it to be allowed in a B1 zone. You could change the code to say, this use is allowable in a B1 zone pursuant to a conditional use permit. So, that's how the conditional use permit comes into play, is that your code needs to identify the, the particular use and allow it to be used, or allow it to be a use within that zone pursuant to a conditional use permit. And in B2 and a B3 zone, it's simply permitted. There's no additional conditions that are placed in those zones, because it's anticipated that these types of things would normally fall within this zone. So, why would you put additional conditions on it?
And I appreciate that, Mr. Nicomou, and, and that's what I was thinking, and that's where I wanted to go. So, I don't want to put you on the spot, so let's say this was an I1 zone, you could do a conditional use permit for that facility if you wanted to as a council, if it wasn't normally allowed in an I1 zone. And I hate to put you on the spot, we didn't get a chance to talk about it.
I don't know that. I would have to research that too.
Sounds good, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you'd have to change. I, I have looked into whether other zones would require there to be a conditional use permit, and in order for that to happen, you would have to make a change to the code to say that it is a conditional use in those zones.
Okay, but it can be done?
Yep, through an ordinance change.
Okay. One of the questions I have for you, Mrs. Beck, and I really appreciate the work you did, and the planning commission, and all the things that you're doing. Are we looking at a gas station today, or are we looking at a truck stop today?
They have classified it in their application as a travel center.
So, that would, in my mind, lead more towards a truck stop. You hear them as travel centers, truck stops. You don't hear the KC gas stations as travel centers or truck stops. Is that correct?
Correct, I think you have the right interpretation, yeah.
So, then I ask the question, which one of our ordinances, whether it's B1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I1, 2, 3, 4, specifically says the words that it allows for a travel center?
None.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Laurel?
Question on B2 versus B3. In B2, Section B, there's a paragraph that in my mind protects the B2 zone, or protects the neighborhood in a B2 zone more so than a B3 zone. It's not long, I'm just going to read it. It says, "Within a B2 service business district, no building or land shall be used except for one or more of the following uses, and provided further in keeping with the city's goal of visual imme- imagerability," I think it is, "and maintaining property values in the areas adjacent to the approach to the city. No permitted use, conditional use, or accessory use shall be allowed, which is in the opinion of the city's planning commission and council, will impair, affect, or destroy the beauty of the area and the traffic-carrying capacity of related streets, thoroughfares, and highways near or adjacent to them." In my mind, that gives some protection to the neighborhood more so than B3 does. If it's allowable in both, knowing the concern of the residents, is there anything negative about going towards the B2?
No, I don't think there would be anything negative in that. It was just based on discussion of what could the future potentially hold, and B3 was felt to be maybe a more open use for, for future development.
Okay. Thank you.
But no, both, the use is allowed in both, and I think there are merits to both, for sure.
Mike?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate the latitude to be able to speak and bring it so much. And I really, Mrs. Beck, I appreciate your honest interpretation of what that travel center was. That, that's tremendous, and I have a lot of respect for you doing that up there in front of everybody. When I look at this, the city of Fergus Falls does not have a travel center within the city limits of Fergus Falls. We have gas stations everywhere. Those gas stations are right up against residential areas, there's not an issue. But when you drive by those gas stations at 11, 12, 1 at night, they're black, they're dark, and they don't have 26 trucks sitting there running in them. So, there's a huge difference between a travel center and a gas station. And what I want to say is, from economic development, I want a QuickTrip gas station at that location more than anybody in this city at all. More than anybody in this city I want it, because it's the spark of economic development that I've been talking about for a year. So, I want this to happen. But do I think it's fair that that should be a travel center, sitting next to the residents of this city in our residential zone? Absolutely not. It should not, in my opinion. So, what I think we need to do as a council first, is we need to come back and get an ordinance of what do travel centers, what district should they be in? It very well may be a B3 if we decide it. But right now, we're looking at apples and oranges. We're looking at gas station ordinances when this is a travel center ordinance. And so, I want to do the right thing for every resident in this city, and the right thing is to have a QuickTrip in that spot, but I want to do the right thing for the residents living next to that, and that's to have a gas station QuickTrip in that spot. And that's what QuickTrip is great at. They have almost 1,200 gas stations throughout the country, and they're great at it, and we want them. We want them. So, I would say to the residents, I do not agree with a truck stop or travel center with 26 trucks running all night next to your house. I do not. But if this can become a gas station, you, I will never stop it. I will work as hard as I can to put that in that spot. So, I would think the council should think about what is designated as a travel center? What zone does it go in? And then, we come back and work with QuickTrip, work with Mr. Rogness as the landowner, and we set this thing right. And I, I think the residents need to move a little, with it being a gas station, and maybe QuickTrip will even move a little. And I think if we can do that for this city, everyone wins, and that's what I'm hoping for. I do not want this deal to go away.
Mayor?
If I may speak. I'm sorry, the representative from QuickTrip, your name?
Dean.
Dean, Dean. I frequented your gas stations many times. I go down to Rochester, I stay in a hotel, there's a QuickTrip, I think it's right off of Broadway. Great place, and you have a great company. I want to see you here. I am concerned about trucks running. We have an ordinance in town, just in my block, on Vine Street. There was someone who moved into town, he was a truck driver, and he would let his truck run. Two driveways were together, the neighbor and his. Well, that truck would sit there and idle all night long, and the other person wouldn't get any sleep. And it was the police that were called, and other things happened, and they finally got that remedied. But there is an ordinance, from what I was told, that we can't have trucks idling in the city limits. So, that's firsthand experience. I really want a QuickTrip there. I talked to some people actually today that live south of town that are like on fire for this.
Yeah.
Because... Because they want you here, I want you here. But you know, looking at the residents, the people who are here in this city, I grew up in this city, and I look at faces that I've seen for many, many years, and I am 100% for economic development, that's what I ran on, that's what I want to see, along with Councilmember Mortensen here, Mark Leighton and others. I want to see it happen. But you know what? Not at the price of somebody's way of life. It's too hard to see that. You know, I've seen these people's faces for so many years, and I know what happened to my parents' home before they had to move out of it, and the neighborhood, and it was a tragedy. So I can say firsthand experience, not with a truck idling, but other things that happened in their neighborhood. And I don't want to see that happen to these people. They worked really hard for their homes, they worked unbelievably hard for their homes. And, but I want to see you succeed, too. So if we could come out with some type of a, an interaction here that everybody wins, because you're gonna get business. You are gonna get business. And your business is sitting right in here. Because where do you think they're gonna go when they need something quick? They're gonna go right to you. Trip quick. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Anybody else gonna comment?
Going back in the late 70s, I worked at that gas station, it was next to the T-Bergs. And, of course, do you see the gravel spot now? It was three times bigger than that back when the highway host was there. And trucks sat there and ran all night long, they'd stop and eat, and they'd sat there and slept, or they waited for the truck, the gas station mechanic to come in and fix on stuff. So I mean, this is not something that's new to that area. It was that way. Now, the people living on the, on the north side of them, of course, this is all, you know, they moved in there, they didn't know there was a highway host, I don't think, at all, or the gas station. So, it's not new for trucks idling there. And of course nowadays, trucks don't idle anymore at night. They have different style heaters that cost way less to run their trucks, so, not all of them, but the majority of them. So, I understand, I feel for everybody about it, but this is not new to the area. This was there, and Jim remembers this, I'm sure, very well.
The old highway host.
Yeah, and I, so I was, I worked there, and I seen it, and so I'm all in favor of this. I don't feel that giving a hold on what's gonna happen there is gonna change much. There's like, yeah, just, I just, we can't, we have to have reason to say no, and I don't think there's a reason, so.
Could I make one more comment, too? I think that the neighborhood has changed. I mean, there's a lot of other development out there, and there's a lot more houses. I think we have to realize that people have put their effort and their money and their time and their sweat and tears, if they did sweat equity on it. And, you know, here, it could really change for them. And I remember when it was a highway host, and it was the station, and I believe it was Bruce Hopper that used to work out there, too.
Yeah, that's right.
And, so, believe me, I know, and that's why I'm pretty passionate about this, that you've worked very hard, but I really want to see a QuickTrip in there. If something could be worked out, I'd like to see that. Thank you again.
Any other council comments? If not, if anybody from the public wishes to come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Ramona Heitman, and I reside and run a co, co-run, a small agricultural business from my home at 1261 South Tower Road, adjacent to the proposed property. I request that the council not approve the zoning change that was set for the planning, by the Planning Commission, because it does not fit. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mortensen and Mr. Kameer. It does make a difference. I bought my home in 2017, and I'm going off script now, so there we go. I bought it because of the backyard. I bought it because it was residential agriculture. I bought it because of the quiet of the neighborhood. It was not a residence, I mean, it was a residence, it was not a highway host. Yes, I can hear the freeway in the background, but it is a distance away. My backyard, I've seen fireflies. Fireflies only exist in places where there is no night lights. A truck stop or gas station would increase the light of that neighborhood. It takes a long time to build a garden. It takes a long time to build some of the things that we'd like to do. It took me six years before I had sufficient growth, produce, and, and time invested in my backyard to become a farmer's market vendor. And I have many things that I have to wait for still. Asparagus doesn't come for a long time, apple trees take a very long time to grow. The main concern of the neighbors is the truck stop. It does not fit with the city code. It does not fit with B3, it does not fit with B2, it does not fit with B1. There are many other businesses that could be fine in our neighborhood, and I think we would accept. But a truck stop is not appropriate. It is not simply a filling station and convenience store, as was indicated at the Planning Commission. I also don't understand full city code. If this zoning goes through, at what point do we, the neighbors, have any say after this statement, after this point, if it is this planned project going forward? My understanding from the Planning Commission was that it's a green light for this project once this zoning goes through. And if that is the case, then we have to talk about that as the project as well. If this is a truck stop, it will quash my small business, because I don't want to be in the backyard with those trucks idling. I'm also trying to stand before you to attempt to represent the other neighbors, who, the current plan, it would put them within 100 feet of a truck driveway, semi-truck driveway. Nobody wants to live next to that. As a neighborhood, we would be harmed by increased air pollution, noise violations, and property value reduction. That harm is real for most of us. It sounds like this is the only time we're able to speak, so I respectfully ask that you do not approve this zoning change. Not all neighbors were informed of the Planning Commission meeting as well, and so I feel like your comment earlier about that the time for the open forum was last week is not appropriate fully, because most of the neighbors who are here tonight didn't get notice of that meeting. I also respect or would like to speak in response, if need be, later.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for letting me speak. I am Christine Ugarud, resident of Fergus Falls. Along with my husband, we are homeowners on Ridgeview Court. This, this is a neighborhood directly adjacent to the property in question this evening, so we are, we are right in the neighborhood. We have read the full Planning Commission report that was dated November 24th, '25, and we are disturbed by both this proposal and the plans to place a truck stop, a travel center. I'm thankful for that distinction, Mr. Mortensen, that you helped clarify. As residents and homeowners in this neighborhood, we strongly disagree with the Planning Commission's statement that this project, quote, "will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood or the city," end quote. The proximity of this project to a residential neighborhood would unavoidably present great negative impact. And we certainly know the history of the smaller portion of land that has already been in the past the site of a restaurant and a gas station that's been mentioned here this evening as well, and we're aware of that. But a gas station of that size, where you're talking, what was it, maybe two pumps, maybe?
Four.
Four? Okay, that is a far cry from, I think the proposal is, is it 10 pumps, 5 diesel lanes? That's a far cry from a gas station. When I think of other truck stops along the interstate in our central Minnesota area, I am hard-pressed to think of one at an otherwise primarily residential exit. The pollution, the noise, and the 24-hour traffic and truck activity in the area where we live, and where we rest, and where our children play outdoors, is a highly unsavory prospect. This proposed project invites greater disruption to the culture and character of our neighborhood. I view the long-term implications of this, of this travel center project as highly detrimental to the good of neighborhoods in this part of Fergus Falls. Perhaps a different conversation could be had, if in fact it was simply a gas station and convenience center. But again, the scope of it is just, is too much. Now, I understand that overseeing business matters is a part of the council role, but just because someone has a proverbial shovel in hand and money on the table, doesn't mean that it should be an automatic yes to rezoning without soberly and seriously considering the implications to private homeowners in the immediate area. We love living and working and raising our children in Fergus Falls, and we are so grateful for the many things in this city. We have business districts in this city, but our neighborhood is not a business district and should not be encroached upon to become one of them in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's a lady...
Hello, I'm glad you have a hearing on this and allowing everybody to speak. I don't live in the area, but the one thing I do do is I do a little research.
Would you like to just state your name for the record?
Oh, Debbie, my name is Debbie Smith, and I live in Fergus Falls. I just happened to look up very quickly, "Community and Environmental Defense Services", and this has to do with truck stops and neighborhood quality of life. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, anybody can look it up for themselves, but it talks about adverse health effects due to diesel exhaust, release of benzene, and harmful compounds at the pump or a gasoline storage tank vent. Some of this has already been mentioned before in a previous meeting. Excessive truck traffic on neighborhood streets, disturbing levels of noise, property value decline, damage to streams, wetlands, and other waters, and possibility of crime. Now, I'm just gonna go down very quickly, there have been some studies. And, for example, because of some of the impacts, some jurisdictions such as Covington, Louisiana, require that new truck stops be a minimum of 2,000 feet from a residential zone, park, school, daycare center, library, or religious or cultural activities. Meridian, Idaho, requires the use shall be located a minimum of 600 feet from any residential district, and a minimum of 1,000 feet from any hospital. The article goes on and on, there is some research out there, and I think the City Council needs to be respectful of those who have invested their savings in their homes that, anywhere where you would be considering putting a truck stop. Thank you.
Thank you. We got a couple more, and then we'll move on, so, I think there's a couple of people stood up.
Hello. I did have a printout, is that okay if I pass these out?
Sure.
Thank you. My name is Alexander Keeler. I'm a resident of Fergus Falls and a family member of an adjacent property owner to 1397 Tower Road South. The issue before the City Council tonight is whether it is appropriate to rezone this parcel from RA to B3. Based on the standards of Minnesota Land Use Law and the city's own zoning structure, a B3 designation at this location is not compatible, not necessary, and not supported by any material change in circumstances. I would like to share my reasoning in five condensed points. Point number one is no material change has occurred. Rezoning requires a substantial change in conditions such as expanded infrastructure or a shift in neighborhood character. None of these have occurred. The surrounding properties remain RA agricultural, residential, and the edge of the city has not moved. Without a material change, there is no lawful basis to upzone. The city cannot use the developers' plans to justify rezoning, as zoning decisions must be based on the comprehensive plan, not a private project. As stated in the application, the city does not have a comprehensive plan. Point number two is RA to B3 is incompatible jump with no transition zone. The zoning ordinance is designed to step gradually from low-intensity uses to higher-intensity ones. A proper land-use transition would require B1 or B2. Skipping directly from RA to B3 violates basic planning principles and creates unnecessary conflict with existing homes. Minnesota Land Use Planning, including guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities and APA standards, recognizes a hierarchy of zoning intensities. RA is the lowest-intensity district. B3 is a high-intensity business district. Planning practice recommends transitional districts such as B1 or B2 between them to avoid land-use conflicts. Number three is the parcel cannot form a legitimate B3 district. A B3 zone is intended for areas that can support a commercial corridor or district. This parcel is isolated, bordered by RA homes, agricultural land, and the city limit. There is no room for a future commercial district to expand, making this a standalone high-intensity zone. While there is a small B2 parcel and an I2 parcel across Tower Road, neither of these parcels creates anything resembling a commercial district. The B2 site is currently unoccupied, undersized, and physically incapable of supporting future commercial expansion. The I2 parcel is a low-impact, daytime-only business that does not generate 24-hour activity, lighting, or truck traffic on the scale permitted in B3. Four is adjacent RA homeowners have reasonable investment-backed expectations. People purchase RA properties specifically because of the rural residential character. A sudden introduction of B3 commercial zoning directly next to them undermines the stability of city zoning and risks loss of trust in future land-use decisions. And five is B2 is the appropriate upper limit for this location. B2 provides reasonable commercial opportunity while respecting the RA neighborhood and maintaining a transition. If the property must be rezoned in the future, B2, not B3, is the only designation compatible with the existing land-use pattern. There are more restrictions and protections for neighbors in a B2 zone and a B3. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the council to deny the rezoning entirely, or alternatively, if the property must be rezoned, to rezone only to B2 to maintain a proper land-use transition, and protect the existing residential agricultural character of the area. I will say one other thing, though. I was gonna show you one thing here, it might be a little hard to see, but, Chief, I'm sure you've seen these before. It's actually a little red text at the top of the driver's license. It says, "Commercial driver's license." I'm actually a truck driver. I actually haul fuel. So I know a little bit about this. I don't know if anybody else is a truck driver or does that in their spare time, but I haul fuel for a living. So my day starts at 5:00 a.m. That's about the time the trucks will be starting, for me. That doesn't include all the refrigerator trucks, they've been running all night long. My day will sometimes end at 8:00 or 9:00, sometimes even as late as 10:00 o'clock at night, if you can believe that. I had to tell you that semi-trucks, for those who haven't driven them, are dangerous, they're massive machines, you can easily kill people, or yourself with them. They're loud, and they're dirty. I have messed around with a lot of diesel, and I have to tell you, it's very easy to spill. I've had my hands, you can't really see it right now, but my hands coated in it, and I've been soaked in it. It is going to seriously change that neighborhood, and that's why I'm asking you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person, because we need to move on. I think we appreciate the general sentiment.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I actually had, my name is Lynette Brennan, and I live on Ridgeview Court, 1115 Ridgeview Court, in fact. And our property, if you look at, oh, I can't see the number from here, but, our bedroom window faces exactly where you want to put in the parking for all the semis. So we're literally 240 feet from where you want a whole row of semis idling during the night, facing our bedroom window. We moved here 21 years ago, from the Twin City metro area, to get away from things like this. We bought our property from Lee Rogness's daughter and her husband, thinking under the impression that we would have this beautiful piece to enjoy. And now, here we are. So now we're faced with the decision, okay, do we try to sell? And do we do the same thing to the next owner, and not tell them what's going in, so that we can get out of here, cut and run, get our money and go? Is that what we're gonna do, just keep passing it on? I'm not... I'm not accusing anyone of that, but I'm just saying, is that what we do now? We're people of integrity, we're not going to do that. So, what's going to happen to the value of our home now? Okay? Also, the comment was made that people had sufficient time to attend the, the meeting. Our notice was sent to Council Bluffs, Iowa. Andrew can confirm that for me, Ms. Kildy can confirm that for me, and the mayor, I believe, you were included on that email this morning. So, my husband and I, Tim Brennan, never knew of this at all. We were informed of it Saturday night, okay, on Thanksgiving weekend, Saturday night. I had to leave yesterday to go to the cities to be with a family member who I'd promised to take to a surgery this morning, and then had to try to get them home so I could get back here to attend this meeting. That's how much notice we had. So, I think at the very least, you need to table this and not vote on it tonight. We need to go back and look at this and look at the different comments from the public, examine the different zoning. I love Quick Trips, I love them, you know, when I, when I get to stop at one, I think they're fabulous, I love them. It's not right for my backyard, it's not right for my neighbor's garden, it's not right for the beauty that we enjoy with, with the wildlife. We have coyotes, deer, fox, a bear, we have all of that in our backyard, and I don't know what's going to happen to it if we have semis sitting there all night long. So, I just implore you, thinking about if you would want that out your bedroom window, please, table it for tonight, and let's have further discussion on this. Thank you so much for hearing our comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we can bring him back to the council. Obviously, we technically have a resolution on the table to approve this, and obviously there are some rules of engagement regarding planning, zoning applications. I do believe that, you know, from a timeline perspective, we have 60 days from date of application. That 60 days would take us to January the 5th of, of next year. So, if tabling was an option for further discussion, that's possible. We also have another council meeting on December 17th, which we could equally have discussion on, and theoretically, if, if there was no resolution at that point, it could push to them, but I would also remind that we have to have legitimate reasons for denial, and that would probably be something that we would have to have, you know, review, some of the comments that have got brought up this evening regarding, you know, you know, the zoning and et cetera that got sort of asked, you know, highlighted this evening. So, obviously, at this point in time, we do have a resolution to accept it as it is, which...
We don't, I don't think.
There isn't a resolution yet on the town, but, but you're, you're inviting some action from the council is what I assume you're wanting to do.
Your Honor, do we have the opportunity to ask any questions of the QuickTrip representative? If he's here, is that, are you...
Are you willing?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Are, where is QuickTrip? Are you only interested in a travel center? Does it have to have 28 diesel parking spots? Where is, you guys want to be a good neighbor, I've seen that. It's hard as a council member to know that if we change this zoning, there's no coming back to us for conditions. A conditional use process seems a lot safer for the neighborhood. What, what can you tell me about QuickTrip's position to help educate us?
So, Dean George, here from QuickTrip, so I, sitting at the planning commission meeting, I kind of said the same thing. It's not a goal of mine to seek out parcels of land adjacent to residential property like this. It is a goal of mine to seek out parcels of land next to major U.S. interstates. So, that's why we're here, I'm not trying to make a lot of nuisance around these people's homes. I understand that is where they live, that is where they make their living, that is where they enjoy time with their families. At the same time, they are as close as we are to them, we are as close to the interstate off-ramp, which is why you're seeing this particular use at this particular location. We have done other locations in the past that have been downsized. You guys probably have all been past our site in Melrose, it's, uh, the store is probably 9,400 square feet, we have the same amount of gas positions, just three less diesel positions, and there's no parking there. We can look into doing that here if you guys want us to. I can't promise that we will, because the economics changed when we're talking about a lot of diesel activity on the interstate here. The difference on the Melrose side is that's the one entrance into all of Melrose, so this is a little bit of a unique situation in this particular location. We might need to be reliant on that diesel traffic off the interstate to make a little bit more, to make it make more economic sense. But it's something that we will look at, that's something that, I know you two gentlemen specifically want to see us do that.
I, I think that in discussion and good communication, this can happen. I honest to God believe that. I think you're a rational person, as, as we are. I think we can talk this through and make this deal work. I honestly believe that. I think you will do very well in that area if, if it was scaled down a little bit, even if it was scaled down, because, like I said, there's really nothing on that side of town and even south into the rural area, into the country, you've got people, there's quite a few people that live down there, that they would love to have that access.
There is one thing that I would, might I pose a question to the group, is, is there any level that's going to be acceptable by the neighborhood? Because we will never do this location if we can't operate 24 hours, and I'm guessing that's going to be the biggest hang-up.
I don't know.
No.
Mr. George, thanks for being here. Who has the authority to make the decision if this has trucks parked at night?
Uh, it's a combination of a team in our office and myself.
Okay, so you're part of it.
I am.
So, that, that is, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a part of the decision-maker to say, hey, I was in Fergus Falls, I listened to a council member, Mortenson, say that, you know what, this is my number-one priority to have you there. It really is. I want you there more than anything, and I will do anything it takes to get you there, but those diesel parking spots overnight, that's an issue for us. And I know you've got them set on your map to be on the I interstate side, which I appreciate with it, but one of the things I was thinking about today is all the way up and down I-94, I don't know of a truck stop that has residential right next to it, it's, it's hard to find it. So, we're in a weird situation here, but I want you to know from me, with my integrity, that I want this to happen, and, and I'm committed to it. So, I want a dialogue, a discussion. One of the things I'm also worried about for us is that in our ordinance, we don't actually have a truck center in our ordinance, and so I don't want this to come back to a legal judgment. Say you go B3 and you start going here, and the residents or somebody wants to come back and say, hey, you don't have this in your ordinance. So, I think we have to, on our end, clean up a few things with our ordinance and do that very quickly, and I think this council can do that, we work great together. I think the residents on their end have to understand that, hey, this possibly could be a gas station on their end if they can come a little bit, and I think if QuickTrip, with you being part of it, says, hey, let's look at this. Now, looking at it doesn't mean we just want to shut this down, it, it's a process, it's, it's a thing that I think can be done. Do you think that that can be looked at and be at least entertained for the next week or two here as we go forward?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And also, too, if I may interrupt you just for a second, Mike, we want to expedite this as quick as we can, because all these things move at a snail's pace, and you as a business want business. And, you know, I think we should just have a little bit of time to discuss a little bit more, and then we could make some good decisions. That's what I ask. Thank you.
I think you asked the question, are we open to 24 hours? I can't speak for anyone else, I live kitty-corner from a 24-hour gas station and have since I was five years old. It, it can be done, I think, with the right screening and things like that, and I'm not as worried about the diesel pumps as I am about all of these parking spots. These parking spots that are all night are a really big deal in my mind, and, I mean, maybe some stay, but they stay on the end of the interstate and not this whole strip, but I, I think there's a way to do both and meet the concerns. I'm, like the others, QuickTrip needs to be in Fergus Falls. And bottom line, I hope you build more than one. I don't know where the other ones land, I hope they're not all truck centers, but I, I think it's important that you're here, and I think the neighborhood realizes that there's probably going to be a gas station of some level there, and it's my hope from talking to those that I've talked to today, that we can find something where you're happy and they feel heard. And also, I think it's important to point out that I've heard from a lot of people that are really for this, too. So, the community is in support, but they want to protect their neighbors that they know to.
With that, would somebody care to make a resolution of what we would like to do? I mean, if we want to table this, allow QuickTrip to have some time to consider alternatives?
I will make that resolution, that we table this, but we move quickly, like Mr. Crameyer said, to make sure that QuickTrip is involved in the residence.
I'd second that.
Thank you, Alice.
Your Honor, so, if we do that, I, I'm agreeable to extend it, but what are we going to be happy with when they come back? That's what they want, they're usually, he's sitting there thinking that, what am I going to bring back to the table that's going to make them happy? They don't want 24 hours a day, they don't want the truck entrance, the semi entrance is going to be there no matter what, next to the T-Berg property, because that's how they work, I mean, that's how they flow. So, what are you expecting from them? You said as a council, when we talk about, yeah, well, push this out, want it back quick, we want economic development, but we want to have a thumb on everything we do, and I don't think that's right.
I mean, would...
I just want to see what they want, what we got to get back, what are we going to accept from them?
I don't think this is the time where we can put Mr. George on the spot. What I would suggest is that Councilmember Crameyer and Councilmember Mortensen get appointed to an ad hoc committee to help negotiate with QuickTrip and bring this home.
I, I would, would welcome that, because you seem like a very rational person to talk to, and that is the fun part of this job, is to, to work out a process that's going to be beneficial to you and to the taxpayer of the city. That's my big thing, is the taxpayer of the city, but I want to see businesses succeed, and you will there.
And then I think the city attorney just wants to pass one comment, and then we'll, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, and actually, it's just a motion to table, so you can do it by motion. I appreciate the opportunity that you've came to, to visit, I think it's been very helpful. I, I would suggest in your discussions that you, that you consider, considering defining what a travel center is, and we could incorporate that into city code to allow travel centers with a conditional use permit, so you got some conditions that can be placed, reasonable conditions, and, you know, I, I look at this as an opportunity to develop something that works well for you, works well for the community, and can happen. So, in your discussions, keep that in the back of your mind, that that can happen. We do have this thing called the 60-day rule, and we're going to have to make some decisions, well, make some decisions by January 5th, or extend pursuant to an agreement with you saying, I'm fine if you want to extend that 60-day rule, in fact, I encourage you to do that, city. Please do extend it so that we can have these discussions and flesh this out, and give us the time to flesh it out, because I'm assuming you're, you're, you're looking at a timeframe of trying to get something done here in the next few months, or at least some, some, some plan, plan, to plan to do this over the next few months, and with, with some approvals in place with the city, because it may require a code change, and if we have to do a code change, we're going to need about 45 to 60 days to do that, and maybe a little bit more, because it's a, it's a zoning matter, still go back to the planning commission for their review and comment, but, but just to keep that in the back of your mind. So, my suggestion is, is if, 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 to, to request the city to extend this for a period of time, just to give us the time that we need. Otherwise, at the next council meeting, I'll be before you saying, hey, we got to make some decisions, we got one more council meeting coming in the first part of January, we ultimately have to make a decision, but with your agreement and with us, we can extend that 60-day, that 60-day rule out for a period of time to give you that time to flesh this out with the council members.
I'll say one thing, I'm not concerned on my end from internal QuickTrip on construction, we don't have this earmarked to start until the 2027 construction season. I do have a finite amount of time on the land contract, so that, that is the one hang-up, but I feel confident the landowner and I might be able to work something out.
Okay, so my, my suggestion with, is, is when your discussions, give that some thought relating to how much time you need, and perhaps we can have an agreement that says, okay, we'll give this time, whatever it is, for a formal decision to be made by the council, because if, if, if we don't make a decision, it's granted automatically, which I don't think anyone wants. So, my recommendation to the council is if you don't have a decision on this coming January 1st, then you should deny it, because that's making a decision and complying with the 60-day rule. Okay?
Thank you. With that, we have a motion on the table, a motion to table this, and to appoint Councilmember Mortensen and Crameyer to an ad hoc committee to work with QuickTrip on defining travel center and come into some resolution. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, again, same sign, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda, which is the main event for this evening, is a, the budget for 2026, which is...
If you introduce this, Mr. Hicks, I want to thank the public for coming tonight, it was very valuable, thank you.
Right, obviously, traditionally, this is Bell's night, but, and...
It's your night.
And I'm, I'm just going to steal a little bit of his thunder, because the city of Fergus Falls has a tax levy committee, and the, you know, it's a group of people, and we can move to the next slide for the attendees. Attendees, attendees included, Bill Sommer, who's the finance director, obviously Andrew Bremseth, you guys are all leaving when the fun is about to start. Andrew Bremseth, obviously, city administrator, Laura Jobe, Mark Leighton, council members and myself. We started meeting in July, and, and we've met at least 16 times. So, and it just kind of, to try to help people appreciate, you know, the complexity of this particular budget, I look at the city breaking it down into three, three kind of parts. There's a general fund, there's capital projects, and then there's utilities and enterprises. Under the general fund, there's 30 line items plus, you know, some of the bigger budget ones of those are the police, the streets, park and rec, fire, library, but then there's a whole plethora of other ones, whether that's inspections, whether it's administrative, whether it's community development, whether it's economic development, and obviously all of those kind of have to be funded. Then under capital projects, there's larger infrastructure projects, not just street repair and maintenance like Mill and Overley and, and, you know, and examples of that would be Junius Avenue, obviously, the police station, you know, the splash pad, and then we get into special projects, which is like the aquatic center or DeLagon. And then obviously, under utilities and enterprises, you know, the sewer, stormwater, water, refuges, and liquor store, and all of those kind of then, you have to be funded in some way or other. And the next slide shows where the funding comes from for these very different buckets. So, the, the general fund, obviously, a large component of that is local government aid, which comes obviously directly from the state, and then we have fees, you know, whether that's a fee for your, for your kid playing basketball, baseball, you know, soccer, whether it's, you know, buying something, you know, getting a license for, you know, your dog or cat, and then we've got fines, which obviously we have, you know, for people that don't pay their property tax on time, they get a penalty, and then obviously, you know, there's other things. And then we get, we apply for grants, which typically, you know, typically come from the state or a state-funded body, and then we issue bonds to pay for things, you know, within the city. And, and if we don't have sufficient funds to accomplish the, the operational cost of the city, then that's where the tax levy, the tax levy is the buffer piece that makes up the balance in the budget. On capital projects, the larger infrastructure ones, you know, clearly, we, we apply for grants wherever we can get grants, like this evening, you know, there was a LIIP grant potential of $1.5 million towards West Lincoln Avenue. We, we can apply for that, and obviously, if we're successful and get it, that's money that comes from the state and saves the local taxpayer. You know, the balance of, of a project like that, whether there's some sewer and waterworks, that, that obviously we can take from some of those funds, but then the rest of it basically has, we have to bond for it, we have to basically take out a loan to do it. And obviously, there are some of those larger projects, you know, for example, like the splash pad, where we were able to not only get grants, but we were able to get donations from the, you know, the, the public and from a different amount of trusts that are in town. And so, you know, the splash pad would be a, a good one to say, well, we got both grants, bonds, and donations, and, and some taxpayer money as well. And obviously, anything that is... And obviously, anything that is short on that, again, gets made up from tax levy. And typically, on the tax levy, that's, you know, geared towards debt service. You know, if we take out a bond that's going to last for 15 years, ultimately, we have to get the money to pay for that from somewhere, and that generally goes into tax levy. Special projects, obviously, the half-cent sales tax program that the state operates, we've used that more than once in the community. You know, the last ones obviously being the aquatic center and DeLagoon Park. But we've also used it for, like, the library, for example. And, you know, the library was a good example of a public-private partnership in terms of a lot of donations. There was also some state dollars as well went into that one as well. And then utilities, obviously, the day-to-day operations of the utilities, you know, that comes from utility bills and product sales, you know, for like the liquor store. And then obviously, capital projects that are done within those. So when, like on Junius Avenue, when the sewer and the water lines were replaced, you know, that comes from fund balances. And again, where we can, we can use state aid grants, and then the balance of it gets to be budgeted, bonded again. So then, how does this kind of like, how do you guys contribute? And you contribute, obviously, through your property tax statement. And the county establishes a market valuation on your property. Then the tax amount of levy to operate the city is then divided by the total property value in Fergus Falls. Obviously, there's some caveats to that, you know, some, you know, the homestead, some is residential, some is non-residential, some is commercial. And then there's a variety of other categories, of which your home gets categorized, which affects obviously the county's valuation to it. There is an appeals process, so if you get your property tax statement and you don't agree with the value, generally, in the spring, you can go to the county and the city representatives on there, and you can appeal, appeal your property tax with them. This evening kicks off a series of meetings. You know, on your property statement, there are three main components to it, the county tax, a school district tax, and a city tax. And each of those will be holding a hearing similar to this one this evening. We're kicking it off on the first. Tomorrow evening, it's the county, and then on the 8th, it's the school district. Prior to that, you received a preliminary statement that showed the city was looking at an 8.53% tax, and we're pleased to be able to announce tonight, we are significantly lower than that. And then on the right-hand side, you know, was to try to kind of illustrate it a little bit in numbers, the county established market valuation of property in Fergus Falls is And there are no cents, so, because pennies are going out. And that's obviously a county assessment, and last year's levy was $8.5 million. So if you take a typical kind of, or a house in Fergus Falls, that its market value on the county is $172,000, you, if you are homesteaded, you get a deduction, and that's approximately $22,000, which brings your taxable market value to $150,000. Last year, that equated to about $868 per annum to pay in property tax, divided by two. The 2026 county market value for Fergus Falls property is now $1,301,008, I'm going to read it, $19,732. So with the proposed tax levy that we're assessing tonight, it's, we're looking at 1.85%. The maximum increase you will see, if it was just based on pure numbers, and it should be less than this, would be $16. And these are numbers rounded for illustration purposes, so do not hold me to account that your property only went by $16. But the county is the one that changes the value of your property, and that's the key driver on your property tax statement. The city does not do that. And so the next slide, which is appropriate for this evening, is grow the pie tax basis. Simply put, the bigger the pie, the more to share in the cost of operations. If we grow the city tax base, you know, that takes economic development, and this city council has made an investment in economic development and looking for opportunities to grow our commercial base by assisting expansion of existing businesses and creating new businesses, like was discussed this evening. You know, just out of interest and impact, the Senex gas station, their property tax value, remittance to the county is $28,000, of which, a little over $9,000 of that comes to the city. The Olson gas station is similar, it's a little bit over $28,000, and that brings in nearly $10,000 towards the city. The late-way market one, you know, is about $14,000, and it brings in about $5,000 to the city. So, you know, building commercial businesses can help impact our property tax and bring, you know, split that pie. Obviously, residential, you know, we've got two sites that the city owns, and we're working on those hard as to how we can develop Stanton Avenue and the dairy site. You know, ultimately, if the county's tax base grows, that obviously helps even the city of Fergus Falls. So your portion is levy divided by total property value. And I think, I add as a cautionary note, and I think that's one of the things that happens in government, we've got to ensure that the government doesn't grow faster than the pie. And I think that there's times when programs start with good intent, and then, you know, they're funded by a third party or an external source, and then that funding goes away, and then we, as residents in the city, then become responsible for maintaining that program. And that program was instigated by, you know, somebody else, and it was thought to be a good idea. But then that somebody else goes away, and we're left holding the bag. And so I think that's one of the areas where government ends up growing faster than the pie locally to support it. So with that, those are my opening statements, and I am now in a position to hand this over to our esteemed, one moment, Bill. In England, it's also been budget time, and typically, there is the Chancellor of the Exchequer that is the one that talks about budget. And there's always a photograph of the Chancellor of the Exchequer that holds a briefcase up like this in front of number 11 Downing Street. And I have for Bill that briefcase. And it's a Super Mario one, because Bill is a Super Mario man. With that, now we get to the exciting part of the meeting.
Well, I will say I didn't see that coming, Mr. Mayor.
Scared off the boys.
We will talk later. And you guys deserve a merit badge tonight. So, good job.
Pass her a bed.
There you go. Oops, you bet. We'll let them exit, and then we'll crank through. Thank you for that intro, Mayor. That's a good summary of the taxation system and how that all works. So Lynn will keep me trucking along with, you know, and before we start, I'm going to grab a drink of water. But that doesn't mean I'm going to be up here a long time, but I guess you just choked me up with the face here. All right. So we've been through the process, you can see that up on the screen. We're here for the public meeting tonight, so I will go through the presentation, then we open it up if the public wants to make any comments. So that is important, we do that tonight. If you are comfortable, looking for your recommendation to approve the budget levy tonight. If you do not do that, we still have one more meeting if we needed to continue this too. But I need to get it to the county before the end of the month. So that's certainly our statutory goal that we need to get done. Next slide. So our cost drivers here in the city, stop at, we're going to start at the top with health insurance. We talked about this in September. We got hit with a large increase, based on our history, 24.9%, it went up. We dealt with that in September, you saw that at that time. Wages, we have settled contracts, we're at 3.5%. Electric, I think in September, I had 4% on that. Since that time, we've learned about the rate case that's going on, and I've worked with Otter Tail Power for an estimate, they think 16%. So we have built that into the budget. City utilities, here at four, that's kind of my standard, I've been carrying in that. You'll see on the last slide, maybe I should have five in there, but. Natural gas at eight. And then liability and property insurance and auto, I'll talk about them all at once here. We're looking at some decreases there, but it's because we're looking at increasing the deductibles. So our tax levy committee is recommending that we go from our current $10,000, $20,000 aggregate, up to a $25,000, $50,000 aggregate. So if we did that, we are estimating the property and liability would go down 14%. We won't know that till maybe March or April, and we're going to want to come back to you and talk to you about those deductibles and get your approval on that. But we've built that into the budget here. Auto, the auto rates are actually going up 10%, but if we change the deductibles, it looks like we could save 12. That nets out to be around 3.2%. Equipment rental rate, that's our internal rate, 4%. We introduced that at 5% in September, we brought that down to four. And then workers' comp, another big year of a large reduction. We didn't really see that coming, you know, I think, what did I have, 3.5% in, because the league was probably thinking rates weren't going to do much as far as going up. But I put in 3.5% when we started, because that's where our contracts are going. We have submitted our renewal, we have the numbers back. We take the $5,000 deductible option on that, we've done that the last few years. And we actually have our renewal, and that would be a 29.5% reduction. Great, great news for the city of Fergus Falls. That's two years of getting 25 to 30% reductions. So that's through the League of Cities. Next slide. This is what we presented, Anthony already talked about that. We were at an 8.53% increase in September. You, as the city council, said, "We want to work on that, I'm bringing that down." Remember that, that's what was said in September. Next slide. We are down to 1.85%, like the mayor had said. So what a great number, that's a good low amount. Total, nope, stay on that slide. Total budget, proposed revenues, $58,913,818. That covers, when I say those totals, that's what Anthony was talking about with all those different buckets of the city. Total proposed expenditures, $56,588,387. Remember that number? That's one of the resolutions we ask you to adopt, is that total proposed expenditure budget. And then the proposed property tax levy of $8,708,708,000. I will say the tax levy committee has worked very hard to get that down. I did not think we would ever come in here at 1.85. If you asked me even three and a half weeks ago, I would not have said we would have done that. So we are here tonight with 1.85, so good job to the tax levy committee on getting there.
Hey, hey.
So...
And staff.
So then the tax rate side of it, our current tax rate at 57.937. You know, when you look at those values, like the mayor was saying, the total market value going up in the city, well, then, when that increases, it helps to drive the tax rate down a bit. So then a comparison of the rate, we're estimating would drop to 56.163, or go down, you know, have a 3% decrease to that on the tax rate. Okay? This just shows the proposed budget by the different areas. The mayor went through those buckets, so I won't go through those again, you can see where they are. Next slide. Just in a pie chart, we are, you know, pretty, pretty stable in where our revenues come from, as far as how it's divided up over the pie. We'll hone in, see the property tax livers there, they're staying the same at funding 15% of the city as a whole. So, you know, all those other buckets contribute to operations of the city. Next slide. Expenditures, also pretty consistent year over year. You see this in our audit presentations too as well, where we actually come out, we're pretty, we stay consistent, you know, as we roll. So personnel being 27%. Of course, we're a people business, using equipment to serve the residents. So you have the personnel side, capital outlay being a large one, that can fluctuate, that depends on the projects that are in there. We'll have a slide a little bit later on what those capital projects are. The mayor already covered about the tax calculations, so we can go beyond that one. Health insurance, we talked about that, that larger increase, this is same slide we had in September. Next slide shows, you know, what have we been doing about that? So HR has been working, they reviewed competitive options, we are staying with Lakes Country Service Co-op, that's where we need to stay right now. But next year, the insurance committee that was put together, we'll be working on this, looking at other options, what can we do? Because you know we're going to see increases again in the future. So anything we can do to help keep those down, bring those lower, we need to do. And that's, you know, what that committee is working on, looking at new programs. Next slide. I already talked to you about the property liability and workers' comp, so you have this kind of reiterating what I said.
And I think just to add to that, on the reason of looking at increasing that deductible is that we get an insurance dividend from League of Minnesota cities, and that money's been going into a fund. And so that's the other part of that, when we get back, come back to you, we're looking to come up with a policy. There's about $226,000 in that account. And so we would be looking to probably maintain, you know, some form of fund balance that would cover that, like, for example, $50,000 of deductible, so that, you know, should there be something catastrophic and we had to come up with $50,000, it's kind of been basically funded by insurance dividends in the past. So to keep, so all of a sudden, we wouldn't be coming back to the council and saying, "We've got to make a budget adjustment, because we've lost something, and we've got to come up with $50,000."
Thank you, Your Honor, for bringing that up and talking about that. I kind of forgot to bring that up with this discussion, so. We show pie charts about the differences here. You can see taxes going up a bit. Of course, that's, you know, the 1.85 we're going up. License and permits, pretty similar, grants and aids going down a little bit. We'll have another slide on that, we'll discuss each of these a bit. Charges going up, other fairly stable transfers going down there a little bit, and then use of fund balance is larger there. And I think I have some slides on each one of these. So Lynn, let's march forward. So intergovernmental revenues, going down because the energy transition aid, right now, has gone away for us. We are working with Joel Carlson, our legislative consultant, to work with the legislation to get that reinstated. We are not the only community, there was, I think, six that in the same boat. We want that to come back. So we're using fund balance for one year, hopefully, we can get that back in the budget for 2027. Local government aid staying stable, you know, just a slight increase there at $10,000, but we are glad it's staying stable at $4.4 million. State aid going up for police and fire a bit, so we put that in the budget. And then Otter Tail County, we have new aid there for maintenance of right-of-way, so we're happy about that. The expense side of things, you can see general government going down a little bit, public safety going up, streets and highways, a slight increase, airport, pretty stable, park and rec, going down a little bit there, community development up, and then transfers out $260,000. That is for the alleyway project, we have accumulated funds for the parking lots, and some general MSA for that project, we're looking at transferring. Pie charts showing expenses, you can see, again, we're pretty consistent, public safety now, a little higher, streets and highways, exactly the same, park and rec down a little bit this year, general government down a little bit this year. And we've got a little bit of slides on those. So general government, we used to have a communications position, we have basically eliminated that department. We kept some funds in there, maybe for an intern in the summer and some professional services, but that was probably the driving force behind that decrease. We have an election... We have an election next year, so we put election dollars in for that. Legal fees, we're in the second year of that three-year phase-in, so that's in here. Restructured human resources, so we saw some savings there. And then IT budget, we have some savings there as well. Public safety, we have a five point three million dollar budget. Certainly one of our largest areas, so, but, of course, one of our most important areas too. So, five point three, we have twenty-six licensed sworn police officers, five admin records, and then we have an overlap with the, the previous chief. So, next one is the fire department at one point two million. We have a, three full-time staff, thirty-nine paid-on calls. We've talked about the truck. You all know about that, so I don't have to go into that again here as well. I guess for the public's benefit though, you know, we are putting away into that truck fund. This is what we talked about, going in that down payment. So, we're gonna take a hundred and eighty from that two-thirty and put it on deposit. But then, fire department will, those other funds will be in the account for, you know, other equipment that's needed in the interim. Streets and highways, three point one million dollars there. Again, we're charging part of the engineering contract to the street budget. We're also putting that over the water and sewer and stormwater funds as well. We see a reduction in overall of a hundred-and-twelve thousand, five hundred from making those changes with the department. GIS, also a reduction of thirty thousand, five hundred because now those services are included with more engineering. And then the, the annual maintenance, so the operational maintenance of streets, we have materials in there for ninety, overlays for three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, seal coat for two-hundred thousand. And as we work through projects, you know, if you need to pull some of the seal coat into overlays, that's what we do. But that's what's there for the annual maintenance. Park and rec, two point eight million dollar budget. And we have decreased staff a bit there. We moved an arena employee half of the year out to work in parks to try to bring costs down there for our user groups. That's worked out quite well. So, we did increase some funding for arena capital, if you recall that. So, I think we're up to fifty thousand a year putting into that capital fund balance. Ten thousand for some updates at the Magnuson Park Shelter. Added a little bit to the diseased tree and tree trimming program. And we're gonna look at our park and rec fees a little bit more. That may come back to you later this, in December or even early in the year, so as part of the budget. Economic development, we have that new contract, so we have a hundred-and-sixty thousand in for economic development services and then the related budget that works with that. Next slide. Port Authority, it's, the levy is seventy-two thousand, seven hundred. We went up fifty-seven hundred. Remember in that fund, we operate the Community Behavioral Health Hospital. That's fully funded through the state of Minnesota. That's the two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, nine fifty. Next slide. Public library at one point one million dollars. We have our levy portion of that of nine fifty-seven. We also receive regional library aid. And then you can see some of the stats there on the library and for the users. And I know we did make a reduction in our three-quarter time position, and Gail is making that up with some use of the aids time. So, some of those changes we made since we were last together in September. The Big Wood Events Center. We have operating expenditures of over three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand there. We're estimating revenues of two oh four. We have a subsidy coming from the liquor store of a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, eight twenty-six. Certainly, that is on the radar of, front burner of the tax levy committee, working on ways to get that subsidy down. You know, if we could ever get to a break even, that would be wonderful. But anything we can do to get that subsidy down, get business up out there, looking at that. Capital improvements, okay. We have street projects at eight point seven million in this budget. Those are the capital improvement plan that Kyle, you went through with the council. We've incorporated that into this budget. The dairy property, the remaining of that four million dollar grant, so the two point eight million. We have a little bit left on the RTC of that three eighty. We'll see what we can do with that. Our annual sidewalk program, so we're in at eleven point nine million for capital projects. Estimated street bonds for that portion, remember we talked about, you use these various state funding and whatnot? Would be at four point one seven million of a bond. That's for both the special assessments and the levy portion. That, on a fifteen-year amortization, that bond then would start a levy in 2027 of three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand.
Do we have anything falling off in twenty-six or twenty-seven levy-wise? Or do we not know that at this point?
I was gonna say, Mark maybe has that sheet of paper with. I don't have that on the top of my head.
Okay. At some point, I'd be curious to know that.
The larger ones are falling off a little later.
Yeah. And then there's a small one next year, and then, and then it's like two years before there's a big drop-off.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yep. We will talk more about those. We'll be coming back more and dial in exactly what you wanna do on that. This just goes into more detail. You know, we had the alley projects north of Union, Cavour Avenue being kind of the number-one priority to get that one done. And then Cleveland, Douglas, Pebble Lake Road, which is all state and federal-funded. Highway Bridge, two-ten bridge replacement, those roundabouts that started. Lot of state funding in that one. And then the DeLagoon Park Road at six fifty-nine. I know we have a two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollar grant on that one for part of that. That's where some of those other funding sources come through. And I think I got my, I didn't change my general obligation bond number there, the three, four, six, six. That should be more of that number on the previous page. I just saw that now. I changed it today. Next slide. Enterprise and internal service, this will go quick. We're not gonna talk about them a whole lot, but liquor store, you can see showing operating income of one point one million dollars. We're transferring eight hundred and some thousand out of that into the general fund and the Big Woods Center. So, we're still having a net profit after we've made our transfers. Refuge Fund, we're looking at maintaining our operating income here. I'll just pause just briefly, just to, on all these enterprise funds, I wanna come back and go through that in more detail because we look at all the capital improvements that need to be done, the annual operations of just running the business, and make sure we have a good cash balance going out. We do a ten-year projection on that each year. So, this is just a snapshot of the twenty-six budget on those. We've been working with more engineering on laying out those capital plans over the next ten years, even if we don't have them out there in, you know, the, the second half of that, the, of five years. We've put in placeholders to what would seem reasonable based on what needs, you know, to be done. So, that's kind of the scenario we look at. And then we look at projecting rates out for that ten, ten years. So, for instance, like in the refuse fund, right now, I have built in, I think, like a four percent for the collection side of it, and the tipping fees, like an eight point two percent increase because our tipping fees where we dispose of our garbage through Otter Tail County are going up. And that's coming January first. So, we may wanna get refuse fund done and rates implemented January, February, and maybe we do the other utilities, March or April. We do the sewer fund in April. That's what we normally set though. So, I'll stop there on that, but I will come back, and we're gonna wanna go into that in a little more detail and get your comfort level of where you'd like to go with rates. Next slide. Sewer Fund, again, this is actually showing a little bit of a operating loss there. Now, we don't like that. We have a good cash balance in that. So, it's got a little less of an increase now. It needs to be higher later to compensate for that. We'll talk through that when we delve into it in more detail. Water Fund, a good operating income here. We have built that up over the last years because our cash balances weren't as high in the water fund as like the sewer fund. So, to catch that up for capital improvements, we've had to set rates accordingly for that. Stormwater, same thing here. Storm, same thing I say every year. It's got a lower cash balance, so we kind of consistently wanna keep marching up those utility revenues there. The last fund, or, okay, the next one is, yep, go to that one. This is a snapshot of what a utility bill, based on what I've built in the scenarios right now. Long story short, it would look to be about a five percent increase on that monthly utility bill. This is based on a six-thousand gallon use. In Fergus, we're probably a little bit lower than that, but we use six-thousand gallon because of a, a rate study survey that goes across a number of states. Then we can, you know, show you how that compares. But right now, like I said, garbage at four percent, eight point two for that disposal. The tax follows that. It's just nine point seven five of the charges above. Recycling going up fifty cents. Then sewer, only doing a three point five, but remember, that still results in a little bit of an operating loss. Water at five percent, and then stormwater going up a dollar. That's, ten percent looks large, but it's, it's because it's the dollar on a, on a ten dollar. We're gonna continue to work on this. We will come back to you with this, but I wanted to, at least so you have what ballpark we're looking at things when you look at the whole picture. Equipment Fund, this is that last internal service fund. We are doing a four percent increase between departments. And then the next steps. We're here tonight. I will be quiet now, let any public that wants to speak. We wanna talk about the utility rate review sometime after this meeting, capital improvements as well. And again, I have to get this to the county by the thirtieth, so. I felt like I kind of shot that out like a fire hose, but.
So with that, if anybody from the audience cares to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, even though we know. But it is a matter of record.
Dwayne Cookman. Beautiful job. Beautiful. Fantastic. I don't think we've seen this, you know, this, this work and this focus on it. Fantastic job. My question was, I know that Minnesota, was it paid time off?
Yeah.
There's a snag coming, okay?
It's in here.
Okay. Is that's like point eight?
Point four percent of salary.
Okay.
Yep. So, zero point four percent, and that is built in the budget.
Okay. But I'm just like.
The employees pay part and we pay part.
Right. That's point four four, but it's total.
Everybody pays point four four.
Yeah, yeah. But, all right. So, I'm just like, oh my God, you're, I mean, I see that number and I'm just like, and you accounted for that? Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience care?
Mike Streer, eight fourteen South Oak Street. Bill, I talked to you when we were over in Dalton, and I'll ask the same question. We get a lot of this garbage mail. How many times is that garbage mail handled by us? I mean, you get some from Millbank, South Dakota, you get from Fargo, North Dakota, you get some from, some Vermigee and Ladina. And all it goes, it goes from this hand to that hand. Is there, in some places, they have a extra fee the city can put on there, just like if you use a plastic bag in certain states, you can add ten cents on there and you pay for that bag to help recycle that bag. Is there some way that we can get something like that involved here so that we don't get all that garbage mail? Because I know this, the, the post office, they like that because sure, they have to deliver it, but then they get paid for doing that. So, is there some way that we can do something about getting rid of that garbage mail so we don't, we as taxpayers don't have to pay for that? Thank you.
I do not know.
I was gonna say, I think that's a, it's a great point. And I think, as you say, majority is, you take it out of the mailbox and you put it in the recycle can, and that's about it. But something to look into if it's, if it's doable. So. Right. With that, then, we would look for somebody to make a resolution adopting the 2026 levy of eight million, seven hundred and eight thousand dollars.
I would do that.
Oh, Laura. Laura's doing that, and who was the other one?
Al.
Al. So, Laura Job and Al Kremeyer. Roll call, please.
Can we ask a couple questions?
Sure. You want to?
I do. I won't ask long ones. I have three questions. One is the lead pipe program, and we need to get rid of lead pipes. Do we have enough money and, like, is there a plan to deal with our lead service lines, money-wise?
We're still working on the inventory, and PFA funds should be available hopefully in the next year.
Okay. Tech for the council chambers. Has there been discussion about money for tech for council chambers? I know that's been talked about over the last nine months.
Andrew.
Go ahead, Andrew. My voice is hoarse.
Yeah. The tax levy committee discussed it for a quick second, and when we saw the numbers, we moved on to the next topic.
Okay. That works.
Frankly, we heard.
It's been working.
Yes.
We heard from all of you, you wanted us to look at a setup similar to Otter Tail County. We priced that out, and the number was significantly higher than anybody on the committee wanted to entertain.
I think it was like quarter of a million.
Yeah, even higher than that.
I think it was three hundred something.
Three hundred plus thousand.
Can we tax them?
Okay. And then my final one is, is do we need money or do we have money set aside for bell tower repairs? That's a question the public is asking, if it's going back. I know it is going back, but how is, or is that an insurance claim or where are we at with that?
We did submit it to the League of Minnesota Cities for insurance claim. It was denied. But we do, we're working on an estimate, and I have just today talked with the state historic preservation office on the process, and we right now don't have an idea on the cost. So, we'll come back to you when we do though.
So, the plan is still to fix?
Yes, definitely. Yep. Building has been on the National Register, start building since nineteen eighty-six, I think. So, we're obligated to restore it.
So, you do have some accumulated capital outlay dollars for government buildings. I forget off the top of my head how much we have in that. Is it a couple hundred thousand? To look it up. If for some reason we didn't have enough, I would be coming back to you and we would be using unreserved fund balance. I mean, we will get it fixed, and if we don't have specifically in his budget, then we're gonna use fund balance for that.
All right, Al?
I would just like to, well, you can sit down. Yeah, sit down, Bill. You've done enough work. Along with the mayor and Andrew and you and Laura and Mark, I wanna say, man, I am proud of you guys. Fantastic job, everyone. And I just can't say enough. And I think everybody had their doubts of where those numbers were gonna go. I think all of them had doubts except one that sits across from me is Mark Layton. He didn't have any doubts about it. And that's, I wanna say thank you, Mark, and everyone. It's just, you know, you're kinda like, you and Bill get together and you kinda geek out with these numbers. And it's just fun to watch and to hear about it and to see how this happens. And tonight's meeting was wonderful. And we're talking about a budget, you guys. How often does that happen when you can have a great meeting and we're talking about a budget? That's, that's unheard of, in my opinion. So, I wanna thank everyone. And Mark, thank you. You're a good friend of mine, and you're very high caliber here to go through those numbers. I appreciate it.
Mike?
Your Honor, I'm gonna just echo that in a little bit way. I know the levy committee involved yourself and Bill and all these other individuals, and I know that Mr. Layton came in there and was very difficult on, on everything with that. I know that. So, from Laura to yourselves, I really appreciate the work that you did in that because I know it was very difficult to go from eight point whatever down to one point eight five. The residents of this city should thank all of you that were involved in that, truthfully. They really should. Mr. Layton, I say to you this, you got on this council for the second ward to do exactly this. I know you wanted zero percent, but in my eyes, you did what you did for your constituents, and I think you should be proud of what you did to be able to do that along with the other members. members. So I commend you all, and the city should as well.
And with this group, I see great things happening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of you too. And I also would like to point out, Laura Jobin has been on that committee for three years. It is a huge time commitment. And not to take away from any of the rest of you, but to do that committee for three years is a big commitment. And I think that the carryover knowledge that you carry along with Andrew and Bill is valuable to our citizens, and I think that should be recognized too.
With all the kumbaya, it's roll call.
I approve the budget except the fire department.
I believe it's yes or no.
Yes.
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 The resolution adopting the levy is approved. The next item is a resolution adopting the actual 2026 budget of $58,913,818. Would somebody care to make that?
We're using the expenditure numbers.
Oh, expenditure.
I'll offer that.
That's Laurel and Jim Fish. With that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is to spend some of this year's money in the tune of $708,683.85.
Thank you, Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second that.
Laura has seconded. Jim is feeling miffed. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Under all business and unfinished business, the city did conduct a, on the 17th of November, as the city council held a closed meeting to conduct a performance evaluation of the city administrator, Andrew Bremseff. The council agreed his performance is satisfactory and he should continue employment. And that's all I have to say.
And he's fired.
I did ask him the next day whether the boxes, and he said that he was going to bring them in the next day. And he has not brought the boxes in, and so I think by default, he's staying.
Can we thank all of the department heads that worked with us for tax levy? We truly appreciated everybody working with us, understanding where we were coming from, taking some of the hits that we were asking. So I just, I wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you. Yep. And uniquely, you know, I would say thank you to department heads as well and assisting with the city administrator's review. It's always helpful to get a 360 kind of picture of people that work with somebody. You know, we see one side, you guys see another. So thank you for that. We have no new business.
Excuse me, sir, can I speak?
Depends what you want to say.
Under new business?
It depends. Is it new business?
I'm not done with the budget.
Oh, yeah.
I'm honored. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Under announcements, I mean, I think, obviously, we, December 3rd, at 6 o'clock, there will be a town hall meeting in this room, which is this coming Wednesday. December 10, at 7 o'clock in the morning, there'll be a committee of the whole. December 13, Over the River Festival Downtown, Fergus Falls Parade, 12:30. Shopping and activities, 1 until 5, tree lighting and fireworks show at 5 o'clock in Wright Park. And then December the 15th, 5:30 will be a council meeting. And I've just got a couple of other things that I think, you know, as much as we, you know, thank the public works for kind of clearing the roads, we should also thank public safety personnel. Last week, obviously, everybody in Minnesota had to retake their driving test on how to drive in snow and ice. And there was a lot of calls on both PD and the fire department in that 48-hour period. And I would appeal to, you know, the general public, you know, to slow down. Obviously, you know, nature is nature, and when it freezes, it becomes ice. And your vehicle does not stop or react the same in icy conditions. So please, slow down. You know, and I think on that, it is the season for slips, trips, and falls. And every year at this time of year, one of the biggest impacts to workers' comp, which we talked about, you know, in ours, is workforce injuries of people slipping on ice. And, you know, there is the phase of walk like a penguin, you know, and, you know, for all those business owners out there, you know, look after your employees, you know, tell them to slow down, you know, clear foot traffic areas where people walk. And I know sometimes that's not as easy, but it will help your workers' comp claims. And, you know, everybody wants, you know, their personnel to go home, you know, safely and in good health. And it's maybe good for the chiropractors, all these slip, trips, and falls, but it's not, you know, we only have one body, and every time we fall over and hit concrete on ice, it's not much fun. So, small business, obviously, kicked off with candy cane.